Good evening. Like all the Alton Board of Selectmen's meeting, March 1st, 2021. The order at 6:02 PM. Until further notice to keep our members and staff safe and to comply with the R S 891-A, state of emergency and governor's orders restrictions on public gatherings. The Town of Alton has moved from in-person meetings to remote audio participation meetings. To remotely attend, audio only, visit our website, www.alton.nh.gov, for telephone access and remote access instructions. Listen on the news and on the homepage or telephone Selectmen's office, 603-875-2113, or 603-875-0229, between 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM, for the dialing code and meeting ID for each Selectmen's meeting. Please all stand to the flag allegiance in a moment of silence. My pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. Thank you. Gentlemen, I need an approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. motion made by Paul O'Shea to approve the agenda as submitted, second by Phil Whitman. Need discussion. Being Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Smith Worth, yes. The town clerk and tax collector's office will be closed on Tuesday, March 9th, for town school elections, which will be held at St. Katzen Drexel Church, lower level, Hidden Springs Road, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Submission of public comments, questions, concerns being none. And at this time, we are scheduled to have a public hearing at 6:20. We have a few minutes before that, gentlemen, so we have it listed at 6:20. Like to move on to just a couple. Bay Hill signage, old business, Bay Hill signage discussion that shouldn't take us that long. And that's at the back of your binder and old business. You have a memo from. And our highway manager. He has reviewed the recent discussions around the use of Bay Hill Road. As you know, the road is never designated as a throughway, a rather residential road for local traffic. We feel the temporary signage is not the best way to handle or enforce the restrictions you are looking to implement. We feel it would be more realistic to enforce, condition people with permanent signs restricting the road to local traffic year round. I have attached accident statistics for the last 20 years by month. You will see that we have had consistent issues on this road during every season, not just the winter months. Therefore, we recommend permanent signs on either end of the road. Respectfully, it's been Chief Ryan Heath. And if you go in there all the way from 1120217, 2020. See the accidents there. Next page, you'll see from 218, 2020, 223, 2021. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Funny, it just so happens I've lived on Bay Hill for 20 years. Just so happens. And obviously, I'm not home all the time, so obviously, I don't know of all the accidents that have occurred, but there's been far less year round than in the January, February, March, and December months that happened. Personally, I think I agree with their assessment that that was never intended to be through traffic. It was made for the residents on Bay Hill. And I think some sort of signage reminding people of that fact is not a bad idea. But I still think we're missing the mark as far as winter is concerned. It's still a concern. These statistics are pretty good, but they're not accurate. Because there are a lot of these accidents that don't get reported.
Yeah.
Lot of them slide down a hill, go off the road, either myself or another neighbor that live on that corner or close to that corner, pull them out of the snowbank. Pull them out and they don't report it and they go back down the hill or they go up the hill. They either get hand shoved, pushed out, or taken care of. It's double in the winter what they have here. And I'll attest that, and if I have to, I'd get a report from other neighbors and get a written estimate of how many people think that they go off the road. Some of these are good. As far as the summertime, I can't ever remember an accident in the summer on Bay Hill. Not that it hasn't happened. But definitely, the concern to me is winter and the slip of the ice and snow coming downhill. I've talked to Josh about also the GPSs. And he's looking into that. The GPSs are sending, I've personally interviewed three people this past, this winter. And all three of them had never been on Bay Hill Road before. And they were coming down and it's more and more people are coming down. And that is also more people year round. So a sign is good to have no through traffic. I think that's a pretty good idea. But there's gonna have to be something in the winter specifically targeting the snow and ice on the road. Because that's still a problem, in my opinion.
Oh, yeah, I agree with Paul on the, on certain things. On the accident report, there's, like Paul said, there's an awful lot of them. I know I pulled two or three out myself, just this winter.
Yeah.
Two, excuse me, not three, two.
I did, I did one.
And, and those weren't serious accidents. They just went off.
They went off into the snow.
Before, they, they had a serious accident, though. If they kept going, it would have got worse. I mentioned this before, closed to through traffic, and I got bombarded here. I definitely think that road should be closed to through traffic all year.
It has to be enforced.
Whoa, 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 all year. Everything has to be enforced, no matter what we do. Unless we put a gate up there with somebody manning it. So, but if it's closed all year, people will get used to it. And if we start enforcing it, the word gets out, it won't be a shortcut anymore. For your people that come from Wolfboro, vice versa, they're going home, whoop, whoop. They can cut this corner out down here. Now, this might impact some traffic up, coming up Main Street, or, you know, into town.
Or to the traffic circle.
Yep, going by Rubens, or headed up by the store, the corner, you know, the corner store there. So, I don't know what the answers are. I know they've looked at it, this is what they came up with. I can't think of anything better.
The only thing I can think of, if I may again, is, yeah, we have two problems. We have one with the winter traffic coming down, slipping, sliding during snowstorm, before it gets cloudy, before it gets sandy. That's when the accidents occur. The other problem is speed. Coming up the hill or down a hill in the summertime is driving through. So having no through traffic is not a bad idea. But it's only taking care of half the problem. They will get used to it after a while, but some people will ignore it and still use the hill in the winter and come down. I know they will. You know it and I know it. But if there is a sign that says, this road is really bad when it's snowing, I think I'll stay on 28, go to the traffic circle and go around. Just my thought.
So in that regard, it probably will affect the traffic going by, like Ruben Store.
Downtown.
Just more, more traffic.
I don't know how much, but.
I mean, in the past, we had to deal with the speed pass Ruben Store. You know, how fast, how fast people drive on Main Street, and that's a problem. That's a separate problem from this, but I'm hearing from two guys that live on this road, and it seems to me that closed, no through would make sense.
It helps.
Yeah, and, and like Bob said, you start the enforcement right away, maybe go a little overboard and where it'll get around, and I think that'll stop it. Maybe.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna correct some of the problem. It's not gonna correct the whole problem. There's no way.
Well, you never will, no. But another issue we have, we have no idea how much traffic, traffic count wise.
No.
We have no idea about any of the traffic on any of our town roads. We have no idea. That's something we should look into in the future, is getting a traffic counter.
There is quite a few traffic that comes through that, that knows the road, it's through traffic, and it's just going to work.
I, I know, it's quite a few, but we don't know.
And that's the thing.
We don't know, I mean.
Yeah, it's quite a few.
And if we did, that could be a help. That's something we should be looking at next year is, a traffic counters are cheaper.
Yeah.
And you learn a lot from traffic counters. When it comes time to rebuild your roads, or fix your roads, or whatever, how much traffic's on it? All right, let's get back to the, you got any more to say about Bay Hill Road? Oh. If we put this sign up, can we enforce it?
That's what my.
Legally.
That's.
I'll, I'll get the chief on here in a minute. Let's take a little longer.
I thought.
Anything else?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think the sign is important. I do still think there has to be a temporary sign added to this in the winter, period.
What would the temporary sign say?
Seek alternate route during snow.
Okay, okay. You thought, you talking about with a blinking light, or?
Yeah, or anything like that. It's not a through road anyway, and they're gonna see it's not a through road. But definitely gotta have something there, because people are still gonna try to use it.
Seems to me at the very, at the very least, it needs to close to no through traffic.
That'll work.
Before I bring the chief and the highway, Mr. Robertson on this highway, I'm gonna say I'm gonna vote against you. Only because this should not be closed to people that live in this community that paid for that road. I don't mind a sign being up there from October 2nd to April 30th, road closed. Like they do on a lot of roads up in the White Mountains that have, that are paved. One goes from, uh, Brad, New Hampshire, in the main. That road going up through there, which they call the tunnels over the trees, that gets closed down, winter time comes, snow will drill.
Yeah, but take.
Year round, year round, I gave you a chance to speak.
Go ahead.
Year round, to the citizens of this community, should not be off limits to them on Bay Hill Road. And as far as the traffic going by my store, there's, I mean, there'll be a little more traffic or on Main Street, I mean, that's not gonna matter. But I think if you put up a sign that says closed, and you get it up early, doesn't have to be at the winter time, year round, closed from October 2nd to April 30th. The through traffic, I'd have no problem with that. But to say closed, no through traffic, I'm against it. Because I'll be the first one to go up in it, and I'll go to the judge and say, you're right, I was wrong. I went up it, but it's, I'm a citizen in this town, I'm a taxpayer. That's like me saying Jesus Dally Road, I don't want anybody on it. This is dead end. There's no, there's no outlet to it. When people say, where does it go? I say, it doesn't go anywhere, it's a dead end. They will still wanna see where it goes. But then you'll start having people come in and say, well, I don't want this, because we've had accidents. I, I just don't feel you should shut down the road, the citizens of the town, because that hill during the summertime, they should be able to use it. Winter time, I have no problem, if that's what you want.
Well, it seems.
That was my original, if you know, that was my original. This was added to it. This was added to it. So it's, I still feel that same way myself. I still think it needs to be enforced in the winter.
All right, my problem with it, Mr. Chairman, with your statement, I, I understand where you're coming from. But I, as a citizen, forget I live on that road, or I will be.
Yeah, you don't get that.
But I take the same attitude as you. What's the difference, summer or winter? I can drive down that road anytime. You're gonna tell me I can't drive down that road in the winter? I pay taxes in this town, I pay taxes on that road. I can take the same attitude in the winter.
Well, there's that side of it. People do have a right to have accidents if they want to, I suppose.
Yeah. The, the word closed bothers me. Bye, Mr. Robinson to the East. I'm gonna get back to you, because I don't think we can end this discussion in four minutes. I thought we. See, that's why I chose it. So this time, I'm gonna table old business Bay Hill Road. Table if you're ready for our public hearing at 6:20. Guess I should have gone on the discipline agreement. Well, that'd have been worse. You'd get going on that.
Okay.
Sorry. We cannot start it till 6:20, though, right?
Correct.
Sorry, guys.
That's what I said, I just said, sorry.
Based on one of my TA report items?
Sure, you think, you got three minutes.
All right. Within.
I don't know what the answer is. Gentlemen, she, Liz is gonna speak on one of her TA reports.
So you'll, you have a document in the back of your binder under TA report. At the last meeting, you requested what it was exactly that the New Hampshire Municipal Association did for you, and this is the flyer that they have, all the services that are provided.
Yeah, I read that. Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's just.
Please review that, if you have any questions, call Liz on it. If not, you can request it. If you think you can, ma'am.
Okay, it's one that is not on the list. So at the last meeting, I brought to you an email from the Town of Guilford in regards to Atlantic Broadband and renewing the contract. And you asked if, what the cost might be if we joined Guilford and many other communities in the annual, in the 10-year renewal of the contract, or five years, or whatever it is. And you have an email in your binder in the back from the Town of Guilford that they really don't know how much it's going to be. But as it is written here, they do know that everyone would be saving some taxpayer funds by paying collectively.
Oh, yeah. Negotiation sounds like Nancy Pelosi. I'm sorry.
Uh, so, would you like to participate in this group negotiation of the Atlantic Broadband contract?
So we're gonna save money, but we don't know how much money we're gonna save.
Well, no, it's, did, did we belong to that before, the Town of Alton?
No.
We didn't. We've always been on our own.
Yeah, it was most towns have, actually.
I, I just have one question on the whole issue.
Yes.
What if the Town of Alton does not approve the contract?
So then, that means that we would be on our own to renegotiate the contract. And I would bring information to you on the law firm that does this, which is the same law firm that Guilford will be using. And it's the same law firm that this board approved in 2016, when Atlantic Broadband bought out Metro Cast, and a new contract had to be negotiated and created and approved. And at that time, that was about 6,500.
And there's like, no alternative, no, no competition for Atlantic Broadband?
Yes. Yes, TDS. You have, you have it all also from the satellites. And there are other companies looking to come in, but they haven't gotten the state approval yet, I think. I think Comcast is one that's looking to come through. But eventually, there will be more of the others. So do we have to get into an agreement with each individual once, sir?
Yes, yes, yeah.
And what happens if we don't get into an agreement with them? And it goes to an arbitrator?
Well, or it just, the contract doesn't get renewed, and there's no, there's no Atlantic Broadband service for the residents in town.
Oh, you mean they just pack it in?
You have to have a contract, you have to have a franchise contract in order for them to provide service to the residents in town.
See, I, see, I don't think so. I think they can petition, well, that's okay. But legally, I think they can petition the state and they operate on the old contract.
So it's after 6:20, do you want to table?
We have to stop, table it. Okay. Okay, gentlemen, at 6:20, we do have a public hearing based on the Town of Alton Water Use Ordinance. Courtney will be joining us here. And she will highlight some of the differences of what we used, what the water works used to have for ordinance. And highlight certain areas where she feels she has improved the ordinance to, for the protection of the town. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to recess as the Board of Selectmen and open it up to a regular meeting and open it up to a public hearing.
Make a motion to do just that.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Whitman to recess the Board of Selectmen's meeting and move into a Selectmen Public Hearing on the Water Use Ordinance, second by Paul O'Shea. I'll hold the board, Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea.
Yes.
Yes. Courtney, are you with us this evening?
I am, good evening.
Good evening. And I just hold a second here. Josh, we have everything ready for the public hearing, correct? Okay. Courtney, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you to highlight the certain aspects of this new ordinance, or the updated ordinance from where it was, and for the protection of the waterworks and its users. Go ahead.
Okay. All right, um, so basically, what we've, what we've done, it's something we've been working collaboratively for a couple of years. We have an effective rules and regulation that was adopted in 1985, where it, it does define certain things, rules and regulations for the water system. Some of the things are outdated. You know, simple things such as the type of pipe we use and the way fittings and service lines are put together have changed since that time. Basically, my ordinance, it, it is a complete revamp of the original ordinance. But the idea behind it is the same. Basically, it goes more in-depth to the definitions of the water. You know, the water use ordinance and rules and regulations. It goes more in-depth with the definitions. If, in the, in the original one, we only had probably, I think we have seven definitions defining what a water services, service pipe, main and meter. And it also refers to the commissioners, which has obviously changed. The new ordinance goes, I believe it's 28 pages long. And it just goes more in-depth into what we recommend as far as safe ways to operate the system and how we can implement those rules. And the reason we have the, the rules for the, for the water system is to make sure that things are done in a safe manner to protect the, the public water. It goes a little more in-depth as to how our service connections work, how our, our billing works. What we would do in terms of an event where we would have to limit the use of water, such as an outside watering ban. More in-depth as to what the definition of a community water system is, how backflow prevention works. It's not only a tool for us to take our rules and get them on paper to show anybody that might have any questions and get it in black and white, but it also protects the system as well. But it kind of serves, serves as a guide for anyone who wants to tie into our system and what we, what we want done and kind of keep it consistent. So we don't have 100 different types of pipe material in this, in the system, different types of meters, and kind of gets it on paper as to what our specifications are and how we can make sure that happens. So, you know, it's very lengthy. It has, you know, I think the first four pages just go into definitions, and then it kind of breaks down how the application process works, what we want for certain connections, what the property owner's responsibility is and what the town's responsibility is. And it just goes into more depth there. I guess I can open it up for questions from you folks. If you have anything that you saw in there that you need clarification on, or anything like that.
I read through your whole new ordinance. I do have to say, I do agree with it. I'm glad you kind of spelled out everything, butter, access fee, approved source, available spare capacity. I, I do appreciate that. Also, looking at the cost, anything incurred by the water department due to the customer shall be borne by the customer and be reimbursed to the water department. I think that spells it out a little bit better than what the last one did.
This goes more in-depth. You know, I think we just scratched the surface before and opened some gray areas.
Well, and we also have to think that the water department is funded by water users solely and only. And for it to survive, it has to, the bills have to be paid. And I'm, I'm glad it outlines better in this when they can become delinquent or anything like that. So it's, it's a full understanding. Nobody likes to turn someone's water off, but if the water department isn't being paid, somebody else has to bear those costs. It's just like an electric company, or a telephone company, or a cable company. A lot of folks feel where it's a town-owned system, there shouldn't be any, no money should be made off of this. But if money is not made, or a certain, or the cost of doing business is not taken care of, the water department will not survive, especially on the 720 water uses we have. So I know at times that our deliberative sessions, people say, you're making money. And it's not that we're making money, but the cost of doing business for the waterworks needs to be covered so it's substantial in the future, we can replace the mains and everything. And I just glad you spelt this out better than what was there before, Courtney.
Thank you. I, I definitely agree with, with that part of it. I mean, we have, we have situations, especially with such a cold winter, where a meter is just under $300. If that freezes more than, you know, one or two times, and a, the homeowner's responsibility is to, to maintain a warm, safe place for that meter as they lease it from our department. You know, and every time we go out and shut the water off, the, the guys are pulled from something else that they're doing. And when we replace those meters, it, it can be very costly. So if we define, you know, what, what is the responsibility from the homeowner or the department, it's easier to, you know, implement those rules, and it's in writing now. So there's, there's no question as to what each person in the, in the game's responsibility is.
Gentlemen, you have any questions for Courtney?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh. Yeah, Courtney, I'm, I'm under, on page 24 on your penalties.
Yep.
I remember, we had a problem this year. I think we had a couple of them, where valves were open that shouldn't be, and so forth. I, I, I just got a little confused on what it means if somebody does something wrong, can we find them?
It, the way this ordinance is written up, and I know as, under the commission, we had discussed this from time to time, because in this ordinance, it's $100 for the violation. For one particular situation that I can, that I could use for an example, we found a wrench inside a curb box driving by. Person that can't operate the department.
Courtney? Not, not to interrupt you, but we're losing, you're breaking in and out, unfortunately. You're gonna have to start all over again if Josh can help us.
Okay, is it, is it on my end? Can you hear me okay, or do you need me to call in?
I can hear you now, it's better.
Okay, okay. So what I was saying is, in this particular ordinance, we defined a violation as $100. One particular situation, and this has happened more than a handful of times, we found a wrench inside a curb box, knocked on the door, told whoever was working on the home, it was actually, you know, a handyman, that, you know, you can't, you can't operate this curb box. When we were working on the leak in front of Dockside, that, that person had driven by us, and we happened to go by again, and that curb box was leaking. Unfortunately, it's leaking right at the valve. We were able to bill that person, because they were the last one to operate it. But there's a lot of times that we don't find a problem with the valve until something's already been done. Now, the, the water department needs to fix that for, for two reasons. You know, it's, it's a loss of water, treated water, so that's getting injected with chemicals. And it's, it's unmetered. I could tell you it costs a lot more than $100 for us to go out and repair that. But there's been numerous times where we've had to go in and actually repair that leak.
Hurt you.
So, so that, um, that's one of those situations where the $100 doesn't cover what we're doing for, but it's better than just not having anything. And that, that can be, you know, that's, that's up to your discretion if you think that that should be higher. We didn't charge anything for that violation in the past, so. Do you have a bat in there or something?
Yes, we do. And Lauren's not quite happy about it.
Doesn't like it.
Something I said?
It won't hurt you. Say we have a bat or did you heard Lou say it?
I didn't hear it, but I saw everybody kind of, the chairs moving in one direction and people swatting.
Are we on film?
Yeah, you are.
Nice to know, because I did not know, I was not aware.
You weren't aware of that, no.
Now I'm turning red, Courtney.
Well, every time I speak, the, the, the screen goes black and then you come back and you're all swatting and moving your chairs. So I didn't know exactly what was going on. Thought I said something wrong.
Oh, no, no, I was trying to get. I wrote a note saying, Dad, he couldn't read it, so.
It went back that way. Came in here for a second, then went back.
Hey, well, while you were fighting for your life, did you hear anything I said?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. Yeah. Any other questions? I'm just glad that she's addressed that in here.
Good job with that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. The summer service pipes in the main, uh, for the summer and shut off and then turn on, are those the same date, April fifteenth?
Yeah, that's the, that's the date that we like to shoot for. Usually it, it ends up being midweek. So what we like to do is, um, depending on the weather, like we had a customer call this morning. We'll, we'll be shooting for April twelfth because that's the Monday before the fifteenth. So that's, that's kind of how we do it. Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
No questions. Anything else you'd like to add, Courtney, before we close the public hearing?
No, um, I think it, I think it's, uh, it's gonna better serve everyone to know, you know, what, what our expectations are and what they can expect from us by the new ordinance and just brush up on, um, some up-to-date terms and, and materials. So I think it'll be a, a good guideline for everyone.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Else on the line that wants to talk to us? Folks, anybody out there listening by phone, if you could hit star nine and raise your hand, that way then Josh can be able to contact you through the system. So at this time, after we list the Courtney, I will open it up to the public comment. There's no rate. Is there anybody out there listening to the public hearing on the water ordinances that has any questions? Um, I will allow one minute if you could raise your hands to let Josh know that you'd like to talk in the public input session. And again, you'd have to hit star nine on your phone. So that's wait one minute. It sounds like Courtney's having fun at home.
Sorry, my dog.
Okay. We'll wait to six thirty-six and then I'll end public input. Six thirty-seven, I will end public input.
You have a net statement on a thing, you know, like a.
You'll never catch him. You'll tire him, you'll play with him for half an hour and tire him out. That's what you'll do.
Unless they, unless they land. I had them land on a curtain before and I was able to fold.
That just numps them, then you.
They slide, they pull their wings in, they start crawling. They look for a place to hide. Yeah, they're back.
It won't be back. They won't be back in here. Too light.
Used a tennis racket. And I've used a bug zapper.
Take a hat on, that'll solve it.
In a room like this, you take a hat up, he'll fly in.
Oh, yeah.
Sure they come from Wuhan city? All right, folks, at this time, we're gonna close the public input of the session of the public hearing. Gentlemen and Courtney, thank you very much. I appreciate you coming on tonight and explaining a little more in detail of certain issues. And gentlemen, thank you for your questions.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve the water ordinance as submitted to the board of selectmen on March first, twenty twenty-one. Chairman, I move we accept the water use ordinance as presented this evening.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Holt to approve the Alton, the new Alton Water Works water use ordinance as submitted on March first, twenty twenty-one, second by Mr. Rochelle. Any further discussion? Being on, Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Wentworth, yes, both in the affirmative. Thank you, Courtney, and your folks down at the water department. Moving on to appointments being done. We'll move on to new business, Mill Foil, twenty twenty-one Mill Foil Grant Application. As you remember, gentlemen, last week we discussed the Mill Foil and awarding the contracts for the dash and stuff. This is the money that they applying for the grant to the state to help offset the expenses of the Mill Foil projects. I believe is on the phone tonight. PM and Kelly is on the phone tonight. If you have any questions about these grants, looking at the sign tonight. And I have to say, this is normally almost repetitive every year on this Mill Foil grant, dollar for dollar.
Yep.
Yep.
Mr. Gould and Kelly, are you there with us tonight?
Yes, Kelly's here.
Thanks, Kelly. Are you there, Dave? Okay, he sees, Josh sees you're on the phone, Dave. Kelly, anything you'd like to put into this at all as, as part of comment for us?
Uh, no, this is the standard, uh, grant application and it's a forty percent match this year, which was the same as last year. Um, so it's basically at the standard application. The total grant award is fifteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars. It's in the, it's in the application and it's broken down by herbicide and dash.
David, are you there?
I am here.
Hey, anything you'd like to add after, uh, since Kelly's just, uh, made some comments on it? Anything you'd like to comment before I ask the board if they have questions?
No, this is just the, the regular thing that they have us do every year. And it's about, uh, as Kelly said, it's the same as it was last year within a hundred dollars.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, I'll open up the floor to you to ask any questions of Mr. Gould or Kelly, if you have any. My still on camera? Shame on me. Entertain a motion? I'll entertain a motion to approve the grant.
Chairman, I move we approve Mill Foil grant for the total grant award of fifteen thousand, seven ninety-three from the state.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Holt to approve the grant from the Department of Environmental Service for Mill Foil services, second by Mr. Whitman. Discussion. Being now, Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, folks in front of, Dave and Kelly, thank you for joining us tonight. Enjoy your evening.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Gentlemen, moving on. Heard Brook Project, permission to access map fifteen, lot forty-nine, eighteen Hidden Springs Road. In your booklet there from access Heard Brook Road two, town property. For the enhancement of the Brook and to clean up trees and everything. Read the report, I've looked through it. I understand why they want to do what they want to do. I still just have problems putting trees into the water stream. Nature puts enough in there as it is. I'm still just more worried about the decomposition of wood and matter into our brooks floating further downstream and increasing the phosphorus levels. When nature does it, I know there's nothing we can do about it. When it's man-made done, there's a problem. To me, there's, there's an issue. I understand the habitat for trout and everything, but there's too large bodies of water here. But this is something they worked on, coming from the government, from, um, they claim it works, it doesn't harm the environment, but that's just the way I am. So I'm gonna look at you three for anything you want to talk about on this. And Joel, Estacio, uh, there was a phone number there, but I don't have it. I don't know if he's on the phone tonight to talk to me about this or not. Nope.
But I can see your concern because we do have a, a worry about the cyanobacteria right now. And I mean, if that's going to increase the problem, then I have a little bit of a problem with it too.
I can't say it's gonna increase the problem. I mean, a lot of this goes into larger water areas, as you stated in the report, the beavers have built two dams. They go into a larger area, which might shed off some of those phosphorus levels if they want to get too high or moved on. I just, I know one of the places we have on the Meramean River here in Alton comes off of Cofford Brook Road that comes from an old peat bog way up in the woods, uh, quite a ways up, but that's where they feel a lot of phosphorus levels are coming out of. I understand they, they feel that this will help with large, heavy amounts of water when it's running down the Brook from sediments and runoff. But I, I just, I guess I would like to see more explained to us about doing this. And as we've heard on Meramean River down below the dam, heading into the bay, leave the trees there so the trout have a place to hide, but within the swamp down there, there's channels within the marsh grass there. I feel they have a chance to hide, but um, if you like, I can bring on Joel at this time to have him talk to you guys a little bit more.
Uh, because I have a bunch of questions.
I, I have just a little input.
Joel, Joel, are you there with us tonight? Mr. Destasio, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Technical difficulties there. How are you doing tonight? I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the habitat restoration on Heard Brook. And just to introduce myself, I am Joel Destacio. I work here in New Hampshire for Trout Unlimited.
Okay, you might have heard my concerns. Um, I don't know if you did or not.
Sure, I heard, I heard a few different concerns. Um, I heard phosphorus being mentioned as one of the possible concerns. I heard, uh, the possible mobility of wood that is added to the system moving downstream as well. I'm happy to answer either of those, whichever you'd like to touch on.
Well, you could start with, start with the decomposition of the wood you're adding to the Brook and the breakdown of it. As far as I, as I stated in my comments, when Mother Nature does it, not much we can do about it. When it's man-made, I have a concern about that where we're worried about the cyanobacteria entering our lakes and the phosphorus levels being brought up into the water levels, which create the cyanobacteria.
No, absolutely. Phosphorus will impact the cyanobacteria population downstream if it is being released either from a point source or a non-point source. Regarding the wood that we ourselves are putting in the river, as you mentioned, I heard you kind of touch on it briefly for a moment, that wood that we're adding to these systems during high-flow events is actually keeping the water that's moving through the system within these headwater areas for the, they act as a, as a, as a storage mechanism during high flows, which allows wetland functions actually to operate, which eventually, which, which essentially will prevent nutrient influxes moving downstream during, um, storm flow events. The wood itself that we're adding is not, I would not consider it as a significant source of input of phosphorus specifically while the trees break down over time. Um, the amount of wood that we're putting in the stream is to match what has been referenced as natural amounts found in pristine, undisturbed systems. Um, so I do agree with you. Nature does put a fair amount of wood into the stream systems naturally on its own. But in areas such as the Heard Brook proposed project reach that we're focusing on, there is a lack of that natural recruitment of the large wood. And that's what we're looking to, to supplement.
Okay, thank you. I know the rest of my board has some questions, so I'm gonna look at Mr. Holt first.
Sure.
I, I'm kind of interested in what's the cost of the project? And where's the money coming from?
Uh, I, the better person to answer that question would be Donna Hepp of Belknap County Conservation District. Uh, the overall cost of the project, I would want to double check with my project coordinator as well as Donna, who I know is on this Zoom call. Donna, if you're out there, click the raise hand button and they may be able to get your audio turned on as well. Um, so regarding cost, or rather regarding where funding is coming from, at least a portion of it comes from the, uh, state of New Hampshire Moose Plate Program. So it's in-state, uh, funding that we're getting through the conservation plate program. Every year they have a certain amount of money that they allocate towards different projects throughout the state and we receive funding. That's at least one of the mechanisms that funds this type of a project and specifically this proposed project.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Donna Hepp. I'm a volunteer. I'm the, uh, the chair for the Belknap County Conservation District. And we were the ones who, uh, received the grants for this project. There's no cost to, um, the town of Alton for this project. The, um, this work along streams, including the assessments, is about twenty-five thousand dollars a mile. And, uh, to speak to your concern related to phosphorus, that's actually one of the benefits of this project. Because what the, um, these large wood additions do is they, in addition to slowing stormwater, they also, um, help catch excess sediment and nutrients that would be otherwise flowing into the lake. So it actually captures the sediment that holds a lot of that phosphorus and, and retains it upstream rather than having it flushed into, excess sediment being flushed into the lake. So it's, it's actually a win-win for both habitat and for uh, reducing the sediment nutrient load going into the lake.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Holt. I'm not convinced on that statement. But who, uh, if this project goes forward, who physically does the work?
That would be me and my field team through Trout Unlimited.
Unlimited.
Trout's Unlimited. Trout's Unlimited.
Right, yes.
Okay. And I kind of look at, uh, the total impact to the area in the future. Now, we have, uh, we generated, uh, mountain hiking trails in the town of Alton. There's three of them basically that, and they've turned into a problem with traffic, parking traffic. And we've been saddled with the problem the town has. We've also had to spend some money on, uh, Mount Major. We have emergency equipment. We buy to take care of emergencies up there. Is this gonna impact a traffic flow on these back roads for fishermen in the future? If this is a, Trout's Unlimited is a pretty well-organized organization and it gets out to the fishermen, we, uh, we're gonna be have fishermen flocking here in the future?
That would be I know that, that's a legitimate concern. That would be difficult to forecast whether or not Heard Brook would be a good cold water fishery for, for native eastern brook trout. And, um, whether or not, you know, our, our implemented project bolsters the population high enough to, 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 you know, attract the level of, of fishermen that would concern you regarding infrastructure and, and roadways and parking. That's, that's honestly difficult, if not impossible to forecast. Um, I know that anglers, they're, they're, they're visiting every town in the Lakes region on a regular basis. They're already aware of good cold water fisheries. Where our primary goal is to improve the, the native habitat for the, for the native eastern brook trout population. And, um, you know, we consider uh, attracting anglers, a, a, a positive byproduct that, you know, engaging in the local communities and. engaging in the local communities and, and, and getting outdoors. But like I mentioned, I, I think it would be impossible for me to forecast whether or not the amount of anglers potentially attracted to the project area would, would negatively impact your, your roadways or infrastructure.
If I can give an example, um, in, uh, the, the, one of the first projects we, the, just our conservation district did was, was, um, on, at Gunstock Mountain Resort, uh, on a group brook called Poor Farm Brook. And it's actually a three-mile-long project that comes all the way out to the mouth of, of, um, where Poor Farm Brook reaches Lake Winnisquam. And at the mouth of the river, um, anecdotally, the, the fishing has improved, but, um, but like we haven't heard anything upstream. I think it's, it's a really long-range effort to, um, help the stream heal itself. And, uh, and that's still underway three years later, so.
I have one other question. It's, could you please, you answered the question, but I didn't. Where is the money coming from for the project? From the state, county? Or any other?
Funding is coming from two sources. The funding is coming from a National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant that's covering the majority of it. And the other portion of it is coming from, funds come from, uh, moose plate fees, moose plate license fees.
License plate.
The moose plate license plate.
Wow, okay, moose plate.
And, yes, and it's, it, there's a portion of the moose plate funds that are earmarked for conservation projects. And this ranked high, a, uh, as a, as a good, as a beneficial project, and so it was, it was funded. We have, uh, Bernard. We're doing, uh, we've, we have, uh, we've done two of these projects so far, and, and we're hopefully with this project. And we have another project in, that we're planning to do, um, with Trout Unlimited in, um, in Sanburton. And we're doing an assessment to do a third project in, um, in Meredith. And I can tell you that, uh, you know, that the projects have gone very well, and we've had absolutely no problems. On the Poor Farm Brook property, uh, project, we had over 50 landowners, and we've never had a single complaint.
Great. Mr. Rochelle has a question for you as well.
Going on to what you're saying, I was gonna ask you how your previous projects have gone. Uh, how long were the brooks that you did on these last two projects that you just completed?
Poor Farm Brook is three miles, and, uh, the, um, the upper reaches of, uh, Gunstock Brook, uh, we did a project, and I believe that one is 1.6, is that correct? Or, oh, 2.2, I believe.
It was two, a total of 2.2 miles to include a tributary that flowed into Gunstock.
Right, and we're gonna be, we're proposing doing, uh, a mile-long project in Black Brook and Sanburton, and a mile-long project in, uh, in Meredith. The, this project is 1.6 or 1.7 miles, is that right?
1.7.
1.7.
1.7. Yep.
I have a question from a highway agent. They're asking, he's asking me tonight to ask you a question. What happens when the state breaks Beaver Dam under Route 28?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding the, the question. What happens when the state breaks?
Yeah, when the state breaks, yeah, when the state breaks the dam, which go, which is underneath Route 28, so it must be one of the culverts that must be affecting Brooke that he's asking.
Um, well, there will be a, there will be, under regular regulations through DES to dis, to disable, to rather dismantle a Beaver Dam. It needs to be done incrementally as to not cause a pulse flow downstream, like a surge flow downstream. So there'll be an increased flow, um, I would imagine for a short period of time until water found its level upstream of the former Beaver Dam. Um, and then I would expect that upstream section to return to a, you know, a more channelized, um, stream as opposed to a backwatered beaver impounded wetland. That would be my assumption. But any, any of what you're currently, or rather, I am currently describing, that action area would be well-upstream of the proposed project area for our project. And any, any, any material, any material that is removed from, should be removed from the system entirely, I would imagine, but there still might be some incidental, you know, movement of, of trees and branches and other organic matter downstream. But, um, yeah, I wouldn't expect it to be detrimental in any way, as long as it's done properly.
If I could just add that it, that we've been working with the Conservation Commission for over a year, um, related to this project. And, uh, and, and, uh, they've been very supportive of the, of this opportunity to, to help water quality and, and fish habitat.
Great, I got another question.
Just, just wanted to show. Collaborate on that same, um, on this one, on the 1.7 miles of, of Brook. You're proposing to do, how many pieces of, of tree and what size are you referring to? I know what we have out there as, as, and an average is pretty small compared to what have, would have been there 150 years ago.
Yeah, I agree.
Are you talking?
Yeah, so, so we follow, what we follow is, uh, through the USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service, they have implemented a protocol here in the state of New Hampshire for this specific practice of adding quote-unquote "large wood" to stream systems. Uh, we follow those guidelines. Um, they were implemented last winter officially. The DES permit applications for restoration enhancement activities directly reference that protocol. And based on that protocol, we are adding, on average, per linear mile of stream, approximately 210 pieces of large wood. To define large wood, that would be any piece of wood larger than four inches in diameter. Um, and then talking with regard to a maximum, um, we, we use whatever, the, the larger, all the trees that we use are directly taken from the, the riparian area surrounding the stream. So whatever that offers us, we'll take the larger pieces of wood that we have to select from, um, typically. But we're not gonna be, every tree that we take, we, we take with, you know, consideration for many different things. And, um, based on property owners, independent property owners along the reach, if they have specifications regarding which trees to fell and which trees not to fell, we always like to adhere to those property owner specifications if they do exist.
This is all done, um, with, with hand equipment. Um, the only thing that's motorized is the, is the chainsaw that they use to, to cut these trees. And they do not cut any trees right along the riverbank. It's all within the proximity.
Do you also remove anything?
Uh, we, we only, yeah, we do not, we do not disturb the streambed substrate. We don't remove any natural materials that have been naturally recruited into the system already. We will build on existing wood in the system, for instance, like supplemented if there's a nice, large tree that was a natural windfall, and it's been in the stream for, you know, a little while, but it's not really collecting a lot of stuff. We'll use it as a framework to build one of our large wood installations, but nothing is removed. Trees aren't removed, um, any of the boulders, and this, nothing is moved in that regard either. It's only healthy, green-growing trees that are felled and added to the stream channel.
Thank you.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Mr. Holt, yes?
I, I still have a serious concern. I'll probably vote against this myself. Uh, my concerns are, we're playing with Mother Nature. That brook has been there for, I don't know how long. And if all we're trying to do is increase the population of trout, we're spending money. Uh, I worry about what can happen. High water, drainage, runoff, rainstorms. I've seen it happen in another project in another community, very similar to what you're doing here, or what you propose to do here, and it caused an awful lot of problems that the town gets trapped financially to take care of.
Anything else? Do we have a, uh, serious trout depletion problem going on in the state that I don't know about? I mean, is the trout population going down? Does it need to be saved?
Joel, could you answer that question for Mr. Whitman?
Eastern brook trout populations are not going down. Uh, to answer the question, do they need to be saved? Uh, um, I, I don't think they need to be saved. They're a species of interest. They're native to this region. They're a cold water species, and so what we like to do is focus on smaller headwater, cold water systems and try to encourage the, the, the growth in their populations within those systems, as well as the habitability of those systems. Um, so for, for myself, wearing my Trout Unlimited hat, I, I will always be an advocate for, for bolstering and improving upon the existing native eastern brook trout habitat here in New Hampshire. Opportunity to do so.
Yeah, I think I just would add that not every brook flowing into, um, Lake Winnipesaukee supports an existing native eastern brook trout population, and that's why we focused in on, um, on Heard Brook, because it's one of those few that, that is supporting, that has, um, you know, a remnant, uh, eastern brook trout population, and we're trying to enhance, uh, enhance that population upstream, as well as do the other benefits that we talked about.
Well, thank you, well, both of you. Gentlemen, any other questions? We thank both of you coming tonight and joining us and giving more clarification of the funding, um, the phosphorus levels. Joel, thank you for that. It's a very nice detailed report, I will say that, the pictures and everything, and the explanation underneath the captions. I did appreciate that report myself. So gentlemen, at this time, um, we need to grant permission for access to map 15 lot 49, 18 Hidden Springs Road for the Heard Brook Project.
They just want to access the map?
Excuse me?
They just want to access the map?
Access the land.
Oh, to do the work.
To do the work. They want to access the, the, the land to be able to do the work of 1.7 miles. I make a motion to approve Heard Brook, um, assessment and, and to do the work from, uh, Trout's Unlimited, uh, to give them permission to access.
I'll second. I'll second it. Motion made by Paul Rochelle to give Trout's Unlimited permission to access map 15 lot 49, 18 Hidden Springs Road for the Heard Brook Project. Section by Ruben Wentworth. Discussion. Being now I'll poll the board. Mr. Rochelle, I'm sorry, did you?
All, all I was gonna say was, uh, I was gonna make a comment that they have notified, spoken with all the abutters and the people, you know, that the brook goes through, and they're all in favor of it. So that, that there in itself, um, helps me with my decision as well.
Any other discussion? Liz?
I just wanted to point out also that they, they did appear before the board. I think it was last year or the year before. And, um, with the same presentation, and the board seemed to be unanimously in favor of it.
I remember.
Any other discussion?
So basically, it's not costing the townspeople any tax money?
No, no, it's not costing town?
No, it's all grants.
Right, well, it's.
And the license plate.
And license plate fees. Technically, it is costing townspeople money, but not taxation money. It's state, federal money is all, uh, money.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? I'll poll the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
No.
Mr. Wentworth, yes. Both affirmative. Three, four, one, against. Folks, thank you for coming in tonight and giving your explanation, answering the questions and concerns of the board. I do appreciate, and good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
All right, gentlemen, moving on to number three, Hyke Caregiver Wage Discussion. As you remember at the last meeting, Mr. McDonald, we discussed this about the wages that we pay the individuals that go in and do the caregiving from the Hyke Fund. Also with that was asked, what does the Hyke Fund entail? And you know, it's booklet tonight, you will find everything that the Hyke Fund entails, what it's listed for, what it can do, and what it cannot do. And I believe in the back of that was a wage, minimum, maximum. But I didn't see anything for Hyke caregiver.
I didn't see it.
Maximum.
Right, so this way, this minimum, maximum chart is here for comparison purposes only, and the Hyke position is not on this because it is not a town employee, it is a trust fund employee.
But the selectmen sets the wage, do they? And it has to be approved by the trustees?
Yep.
And what? Yes, sir. We had an applicant, right?
Yes.
Was the wage, the wage wasn't a problem then, was it?
No.
With the applicant?
No, I believe the whole issue was brought up by selectman McDonald.
I just want to clarify that. I, that's what, that's the way I understood it. Selectman McDonald, if you remember, the sl, the wage felt, feels low, and at times it's hard to find a caregiver. And he feels that, he's not here tonight, so I'm speaking for him if I have it right. He felt at times it could be what we offer for salary. And he felt it should be increased. Um, and I cannot remember the exact amount of that salary for that night for that position.
I think it was 1277.
And the hardest thing was trying to find folks to go in right now because of COVID and everything else.
It is 1277.
And he thought it should be at least raised up to 15. I think he was looking for higher, but 15, I think he was looking more than 15.
He mentioned 20.
I, I think he was looking 20, and I had mentioned 15 at least. Now, do they get paid mileage when they run errands with their cars? It's just still by the hour?
It's by the hour.
So if they're using their cars, they're not getting any extra?
I don't believe so, but I'm not 100% on that.
Because they ask someone to use their own vehicle for $12 an hour and go run errands to the store for them. Uh, as you read in there, they can't get a laundry mat for them or anything.
Right.
They assist with laundry at their homes. Um, I, you know, get mileage that way. I think maybe if, if the selectmen do not, and I, I'm gonna ask you folks to look at this over the next week, and we'll bring it back up, because this is the first time you saw that whole with Hyke Fund. It's what it goes for, and it's quite a bit in the filter reading, just as the water department was on the ordinance, not as much though. But see what the, think about what an individual has to do to be a caregiver for this, because I think the town limits 10 hours per client right now, but it's up to 20 hours by the fund itself it can be, per individual.
More than one client, yeah, and we only have one client at this time.
The, uh, position doesn't require an L and A?
No, no, that was another question last week, too.
Well, I would like a little time to think about it, because I work with a lot of L and As, and, uh, like to see what kind of salaries they're bringing in right now.
So you say we only have one client now? We have one client now that requests the use of the Hyke Fund. How many do we normally have?
You know, maybe, eh, since I've been here, maybe three.
So we only have one caregiver?
No, we have had multiple caregivers.
Have?
Yep.
How many do we have now?
One.
One.
Yeah, we, we had another one, and as soon as the state of emergency occurred, she just did not return to work.
So we have one client and one caregiver?
Yep. It's always good to have an, a spare, an extra caregiver on hand in case someone is ill or can't, you know, or we have another client.
Three is, three is always best, to my, my knowledge, because if one's sick and you only have two, you're asking one person to pick up double coverage. At least if you have three, then two could split that one individual's duties if they had to, to carry over. Uh, and I, I think it'd be adhering to the town to find someone such as, if they're going to retire, this'd be a good job for you to decide to retire them. Because you've worked with the elderly so much. Because you've worked with the elderly so much.
Well, I, I'm in a position actually to compare prices and stuff, so. Because that's what I do. In fact, I have done home or work myself, so.
So I, I think to ask for someone to do that and only, that's what they're limited to each week, I think the, the rate of pay is a little low. I think the selectmen need to look at it maybe to increase it.
And might, maybe mileage? And adding mileage as well?
If you're not going to increase the pay that much, you should at least pay the mileage.
The expenses are important with the, the prices of gasoline going up.
All right, so gentlemen, take a look at this, this week, review that whole packet, see what it's limited to, how many hours per client. I think it's up to twenty hours per client, but the town only allows ten, I think right now, the way I was reading that, the way, the way it's written.
Ten hours per week per client.
For this, this new application?
Yep.
Has she been hired? Or this person?
We have true.
Yes. Okay, okay, just want to make sure. Okay. Mr. McDonald had a issue with what we were paying, it felt it should be a lot higher. Let you gentlemen look at the page scale, minimum, maximum. We do not have a minimum, maximum on this because it is get paid out of, through the trustees of the trust fund, but we set the salary. If you look at that over the week, we'll, we'll bring it back up next week. Sounds good.
Yep.
All right, gentlemen, moving on to old business. Bay Hill Road signage discussion, the one I thought would only-
You were going to bring up the chief.
I am, I'm going to bring the chief and the highway agent in. So Josh, if you can get the chief for us. Could you bring down the screen now? Because if I'm going to sit on camera and be seen, I'd like to see who I'm talking to. Hello? Hello, chief, how are you tonight? Mr. Roberts, are you there also with us?
Yes, I am.
All right, well, you heard our comments from before, I'm sure, and had maybe raised an eyebrow or two. You've heard what each- That was nice talking, thank you. You've heard what each selectman has to say. I would like to have you to take here and give us your input of what we discussed and what you feel should be the best nature in the following the town.
Okay. Ken, you want me to go first, or you want to go first?
If you would, please.
All right. The main thing that I think we need to look at and talk about is the issue is that what we're trying to do here is we're trying to change behavior. I, I listened, I got most of the conversation, you guys started a little bit before I could actually get on. But I caught most of the comments that were made by the different board members in relationship to this situation. But the biggest issue is we're trying to change behavior, whether it's stopping people from using the roadway during just inclement weather, or not using the roadway at all. I know there were some comments about enforcement. The biggest issue I had, and the reason I wrote the memo and recommended closing it to through traffic year round is because we're constantly trying to change human behavior when it comes to driving, whether it be speeding in certain areas, you know, reducing speed school zones. And it's constant, we're constantly out there enforcing it and doing this. I, I don't expect any change whatsoever if we put temporary signage up there in the winter. Because I, I, one of the board members actually mentioned the issue of taxpayers using that as a through way to work in the morning. Well, I mean, I, I don't know about you folks, but I can, I'm willing to bet that at one time or another, you found yourself on autopilot in a daze, thinking about something going on in your life and you ended up at work or at home and forgot to make a stop along the way because you were preoccupied. But you're still going in that same route. It's a, it's a learned behavior, and we do it all the time. If we don't do something, I, I'm not in favor of, of a temporary signage because of that fact, because I don't think it's going to affect people or affect the change that you're looking for. With that said, I know, I, in the memo, we introduced a, a close to through traffic. Those are easier to enforce. A permanent signage like that. But there's another, you know, option that you could consider is instead of going to the extreme of closing it, because I know there was some concern about closing a town road to other taxpayers. We could do permanent signage, but instead change the wording to not suitable for inclement weather. And we could put some type of signage like that, where you have double signs at either end. I, I recommend double signage. I know that typically you put a road sign on the side that you're traveling on. Double signage on either side, if you see when, when, when you're trying to make a statement, double signs, whether it be caution signs that say not suitable for inclement weather. It, it usually grabs the driver's attention a lot more, especially where the roadway is not excessively wide to begin with. So that, that's really my, my stance on things is, is the fact that we're really, we're trying to change that behavior. I, I just don't think a temporary here and there is going to have that effect. And you're going to run into a problem. We may get, we may start to get people's attention towards the end of winter, but I think what's going to happen unfortunately, like it does every year for us at the police department, is the first snowstorm that comes, it's almost like we look at each other and kind of ask, did everybody forget how to drive in snow? Because we have twenty-six cars off the road at the very first sight of inclement weather. And it's because we're used to, we're, we're not, we're not back in the mindset of driving in inclement weather, coming from, you know, but after that first snowstorm, everybody starts remembering and taking precautions that they need. So.
On, on six ton limit signs temporary?
No. Well, the, the posting sheet, oh, I'm sorry, the, the weight limits for spring, the Ken does, but yes, those are, those are temporary during mud season.
And those work?
Well.
Sometimes.
Well, yeah. I mean, they have to be enforced, is really what it is, it's constant enforcement. Those are temporary, but I, I think the, the difference between any, closed during a snowstorm or some sort of inclement weather, we, it, it's, it becomes a judgment call when you get to court, as to whether or not the sign, when you're, when you're doing a temporary for inclement weather, you know, the individual who's putting the sign out at that point in time is making a judgment call, and the court may not agree with that.
So chief, my comment was, why not put on it, road closed to through traffic, October second to April thirtieth? That's not temporary, that's basically a seasonal road, just like you have no parking ban on Main Street from October second or November first to April second.
Sure.
I mean, no, I, I know, I'm just asking you, because that's what I had stated after all the board had said something earlier, of putting something like that up, then you're not cutting it off to summer traffic, just for local traffic only, that's in spring and summer.
No, that would, that would work too, because it is a permanent solution, something they're seeing all the time. So even when they're using it in the summer months, they're seeing that sign, they're visualizing it, it will set in, they're not going to forget. So I would, I would say that's a, that's a valuable option too. Yes, I'm sorry.
If I may add, we do have, I mean, we do have signs on the hill. At the bottom of the hill and the top of the hill, we show a twenty percent pitch with a truck on it, no, a sign with no trucks on it. We constantly have trucks coming up and down the road. Those signs are permanent signs, they're not temporary. They come through, we, we have that sign in the industry that shows a box truck with an X, a cross in it, and we do have it all the time, every day. And that sign is there permanently. We have this twenty percent.
This is one that you're saying that, that the signage on there is, is it the grade sign, the, the caution sign? Or are you talking about a no trucking sign?
Talking about the sign at the bottom of Bay Hill, as you enter Bay Hill, you come up on the left-hand side, you'll see a, a truck with a circle and a red cross in the center of it. It's a box truck, no trucks. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see another truck with a twenty percent angle coming down the hill. Those two signs are fixed, permanent, and we get trucks every day.
Mm-hmm. Well, you can't stop trucks to local deliveries, that's for sure.
I think, the one thing that you said I think I agree with is yes, in court, how do you enforce it? Try and tell somebody not to use them in inclement weather. As far as the other signs, people ignore them anyway.
Ken, can you help me out with that sign that he's talking about with the box truck and a circle around it? Is that a town sign? Because that's not something I'm familiar with.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, it's at the bottom of the hill.
He's asking Ken.
He's asking Ken, hold on just a second, gentlemen. Ken?
I'd have to look at it. I know that the state had put a sign up towards the bottom of Bay Hill, but that was directly for Route twenty-eight A. Now, is that the state sign at the bottom of Bay Hill, or is that one for Bay Hill Road? You'd have to look at it.
The left one's on the right.
Yeah. The twenty percent grade is a warning sign to anybody that has a truck that there is a twenty percent grade. Now, we discussed earlier about six ton load limits, even though they haven't been pulled from certain places. We wanted to put Bay Hill Road on that, and that would be enforceable that anybody over six tons that doesn't have a local delivery, the police could stop them and do something. But we, we didn't add that back in, all those were supposedly taken off, even though a few of them are still left on.
I was just, I was simply making a point. A permanent.
I, I will make a point, Paul, to go out and, and look at that signage, but I, I, I need, I, I think we might, might find out that the one, the, the one that's no trucking sign, I think is for twenty, Route twenty-eight A. I think it's a state aware of us doing it locally, that prohibited truck. And like Ken said, the, the, I am familiar with the grade sign, but that's a cautionary sign, that's not, that's not an enforcement sign.
Okay.
That's just to caution drivers when they're, when they're, you know, taking that route.
All right.
Yep.
You just asked a question. You gentlemen all set for a second? Ken and Chief?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to, Paul has a question. Well, if that sign is for twenty-eight A, that means they're going to go up Bay Hill Road. It's no truck.
It's, it's on Bay Hill.
Yeah, it's, that's, that's on Bay Hill Road, and plus there's one on the top of Bay Hill Road for trucks. Right. Only seen the grade, that's it, I haven't seen no-
The twenty percent is on both ends.
Right.
The one that shows the box truck with the circle around it, with the red line, that's on the bottom.
That's Route twenty-eight A, you guys, before having concern.
Basically Bay Hill.
Well, originally it was put, when you came down twenty-eight A, it was supposed to be there for the tractor trailers, and the only ones that are allowed up there are going, the ones that are going to the camps to deliver food. And I remember that being installed years ago when I was on the board, and it was requested of the state. It was requested to the state, the state did enact that, I remember. Nothing was ever put on Bay Hill Road to say no trucks. There's never been an ordinance for that.
Okay.
This sounds like catchy stuff, now it's red with white lines.
Well, if there's nothing, if they put, if we're interested in putting signs on twenty-eight A, we sure should be interested in putting something up on Bay Hill Road. Come on, we got to put something up.
Twenty-eight A is a state road.
Right, right.
Well, it, it was said the townspeople wanted something up on-
The residents, the residents on Bay, on twenty-eight A went to the state.
That's what I'm saying.
Yep. Went to the state. I understand that. None of us has said we're against the sign for Bay Hill Road.
Well, we've talked about this since I've been a selectman for over a year. I'm sorry, guys.
Well, I've been, I've brought it up a couple of times, and I'm glad we are discussing it. It's only a suggestion. I, I'm, I'm concerned with people coming down the hill, and the, the biggest problem has been snow and ice. I've witnessed it, I've seen it for twenty years. My wife has seen it for thirty years, people flipping over and coming on their side, and it's always the same location. And that's why this, this, the specific house where most of the accidents are, which is on Jewett Farm Road at the end, has rocks in their front yard, so that the cars won't come all the way across the lawn into their house.
As long as you put a date on it. But do you make a year round like that? I disagree with it. Well, I disagree with you, Mr. Chairman, on that. I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen, you got the sign, you got the recommendations of the police chief and highway agent in front of you. I'll entertain a motion.
When I first brought this up, I am going to say, when I first brought it up and I thought possibly a temporary sign would help, putting a, a sign year round, I just don't know if saying closed is the right answer either. But.
Well, gentlemen, I'm going to table this matter then at this point. Go back for a week and think about it, see what type of sign you want, bring your ideas back. How's that?
Yeah, I was interested in the chief's. I was interested in the chief's possible suggestion of a unsafe and inclement weather type sign.
Well, that's what I was saying before, but I don't think the chief said that.
Yeah, he did.
He, he mentioned it. Chief, did you say to put a temporary sign?
Yeah. Well, no, what, oh, I'm sorry. What, what I was talking about was the same idea on a permanent basis, dual signs at either end that says unsuitable for inclement weather. But again, that would be a cautionary sign at that point, it wouldn't be an enforceable sign, it would be a cautionary.
I did hear you say, I thought you were talking about in addition to the closed sign, no through traffic.
What he did though say, it would be a cautionary sign, it would not be enforceable. You didn't hear that, right?
Yeah.
It would not be enforceable.
It would not be enforceable.
We're not stepping on a taxpayer's toes that way.
No, it's-
That's kind of where I was going with-
That's a sign that means absolutely nothing. I'm sorry.
But it's a reminder for somebody to possibly not use the hill.
Hey, gentlemen, I'm going to ask you to go back another week and just think about it, see how you want the sign, and come up with some ideas next week. Brought it out again, one more week will be close to the spring, maybe you won't have any more. You won't have any more. But go back to it, I will ask Liz to send something to Mr. McDonald for him to think about it. Chief and Ken, I do appreciate your input on this. I don't know if there's a perfect solution, never is. Now, we need the-
Talk to the neighbors and bees. I talk to all the neighbors.
But thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Don't forget me.
Absolutely, no problem. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
You too, sir.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, moving on to number two, old business. Displeting grievance complaint and appeal policy. Laura went back to the policy after we discussed it last week, did change, out of my discussion on it. As you folks go back and look at it again last week, come back for approval this week, she resubmitted everything to you. There is just a few word changes she does have to do in there to, just to clarify issues, and I can tell you which ones they are, I pointed out to her, it's on page three, step two, the first two lines, I'll read them to you. If the employee is not satisfied with the outcome of step one, the employee puts the formal grievance in writing to the town administrator, provides it to the town administrator, who issued the discipline. At that point, the town administrator had not, has not issued discipline. So she's going to re-change the verbiage on that, correct, Laura? And then down on step three, kind of says the same thing in those first two lines, presides it to the governing body who issued the discipline. We have not issued discipline at that point because we are the final step. So.
She'll check the whole policy.
She will check that all over. I'd like to have you look at that to see if you're agreeable to it. We did bring it back down to three steps versus four steps. And that's a help. If you'd like another week to look at it, Laura will review, review it and make sure it's right, and bring it back first.
Okay.
But that, that, I'm sure if you've read it through the packet, do you agree with most in tailing what that has to say?
Yes.
Not quite everything I wanted, but I'm happy with it, it's a lot better than what it was. Paul? Yeah, I guess so. Paul?
I just like things simplified.
Anything you'd like to see changed then? Phil?
Yeah.
Um, Paul?
The, the step one, maybe I'm, maybe I'm just looking at it wrong. In step one, for the, for the formal grievance in writing, that's in writing. Okay, and it's, it's in writing, this must be done within the five-day business days, to the town administrator, correct?
Step one, step two, you mean?
Step, step one is in writing to the town administrator?
Up to the department head.
To the department head.
Step one is.
All right, yes, I'm sorry. There it is. I'm circling it. To the department head. So step two would be to notify the town administrator. Okay, thank you.
Step three would be us.
And that's, that's correct. That would be the correct step. Thank you.
All lessons, five, fifteen days could happen before it gets back to us. Fifteen working. Each step, there's a five day process.
Yeah, five days.
My point was to make sure that at, at least within step one or step two, that the town administrator should be notified first. And then if it needs to go to the selectmen from there.
Any other comments?
Meeting commended.
Hey, Laura, we'll have it back to us next week. Other than that, I think you almost gotta go there, Laura. All right, good.
Sounds unhappy about almost.
We're getting there.
All right. At this point, two gentlemen, we'll move on to selectmen's report. Mr. Holt?
No.
Rochelle? Um, there's nothing to add at this time. We don't, we didn't have a meeting last week for the, uh, Alton Master Plan, but we will be meeting. Um, we're skipping this week. We're still waiting for some information to come in. We'll get it next week, and I'll have more to add to the, uh, Master Plan Committee. Uh, the other thing I just wanted to mention, the ICE Runway, Alton Bay, um, airport. Had a short two week season. Very good two weekends, very successful. Um, first Saturday of the opening of that week, we had an estimation of a hundred and twenty-five planes came in in one day. The second, not Saturday, but Sunday, that was the twenty-first of February, we had a clicker. We finally got one from DOT. And we were actually able to click. We actually had a hundred and eighteen, uh, aircraft come in safely. With no incidents, everybody came in, went out. The bay was full of spectators. People were enjoying themselves, getting out. There were people, um, on snowmobiles. There were people on four wheels fishing and just general walking and walking around. We had the airport was, um, not allowing anybody inside the area where the parked planes were. They had to stay on the outside for safety. And not just safety, but also for COVID. Uh, no one was allowed. But I did hear, and you can fact check it, last Sun, that Sunday, if you wanna fact check it, Manchester, we were busier than Manchester Airport in the state of New York.
You said busy. More than one. Believe me, Fox News on that one for you.
O- over three hundred, over three hundred aircraft came in all.
Yeah.
In two weeks.
Good job.
Good job. Mr. Whitworth?
Nothing.
Nothing report. Mr. McDonald? Cause you didn't know if he had. Mr. Whitworth, uh, the only thing I have, I do not have anything from budget committee, cause I think they've gone into, uh, snowbird mode now that.
I've been.
I would like to suggest though to you gentlemen, back to the article of the buyer equipment capital reserve fund. When you see the taxpayers out there, inform them, please, that this is not a regular fireboat or a regular boat you go suntan on out in the lake. Is this the transport firemen, medical personnel, and to bring back in people that need medical attention? This is not your family boat that you go sit and cruise out on all day long. This is for work. It is for medical. Unfortunately, anytime you put anything with our medical or municipality to it, the price goes up. Especially when it comes to boats or ambulances. So this is needed. I'd hate to see what we'd have to do, um, if we did not get approved at town meeting. The selectmen are still agents to expend on a capital, um, reserve. That's the way the town set them up years ago, and the people approved it. But I would not want to do that myself because I'm always upset about that when that happens. This is for safety and the well-being of everybody in town. It's not just for island folks. It's for our residents that go out and use the lake in their boats. Our kids that go swimming down in the bay that might be out with their friends on their boat. So this is not just for island people. This is for everybody. So I, I just like, if you can, let folks know there was nothing. The transparency has always been there, and it still is. Thank you. And at this point, I'll turn over to the town administrator. She already gave one of her reports.
Yep.
It wasn't on our list.
Um, yep, the NHMA flyer. So the only other thing is, uh, which I'm recommending that you agree to join Guilford on a renegotiation of the Atlantic Broadband contract, which will take place in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three and maybe even twenty twenty-one. It's a lengthy process. As you know, Phil, you've been through it two, twice now.
You need a week to think about that, gentlemen, or do you wanna?
It was, well. I thought I read, read a figure. There was no cost associated with it. Mr. Dunn did not know. Last time the town of Alton, the, the cost of the town was sixty-five. Town hired their own attorney to do the, um, contract with Lenny Broadband. And I, I guess it was just about at that time it was Lenny Broadband because before it was Metrocast.
Right. They, they bought out the company, and a new contract had to be negotiated. And we used the same attorney that is, um, that Guilford will be using for all of these other communities as well. It's, it's a, um, a law firm that specialize, this particular attorney, Kate is her name, uh, specializes in contract negotiations.
My only concern would be is, Mr. Dunn says it should save us all money. But I also look at it, and then each, as each town goes, they want something different, or negotiate something different, the price will go up. So I still say, you know, you can count on it's gonna cost you sixty-five hundred dollars to eight thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
It, it could, because the one that happened in two thousand and sixteen, there were no changes or recommendations for changes. It was simply to change the name from Metrocast to Atlantic Broadband. She also did a review of everything in the contract, which was rather thick, thick contract. But that's her specialty, and that cost about sixty-five hundred.
I don't know. I, you know, I have a problem with these companies with contracts. What, we have a contract now with.
Yes, sir.
That's right, right?
It's a franchise contract.
Franchise contract.
Franchise contract.
Habit by law.
I understand.
I know what you're doing it, but.
Everyone does.
So we have a problem with the contract now?
As far as I'm concerned, I don't have a problem with the contract.
I don't know. That's why the board asked last meeting or the meeting before to put something out in the newspaper asking people to send in their input if they did have a, a comment, question, concern, or whatever. So that's already been sent out. So we're just waiting.
So right now, you don't need a vote tonight. You just, general consensus.
Well, the idea would be sooner than later is what they're looking for.
I do know of one incident that occurred, but this was actually a positive incident, and it was a renter on Route eleven down near the Guilford line who was having an awfully hard time finding anyone to pro, to provide some sort of cable. And she reached out to the town hall, but it was given to me. I reached the manager over in Belmont, and she's fine now. She has cable TV. That last road on Route eleven on the left.
Reed, uh, Reed Road.
Riley or?
Riley Road.
Yeah.
Generally, it seems as though the average person has to fight and call every single month in order to, with their company, whether it's TDS or, or broadband or, or whatever, and, and renegotiate their terms every couple of months, because it seems like something goes up.
And, um, Bob, you mentioned something before when this was brought up earlier in the meeting about what happens if you just don't do a, a contract, and it's my belief that there would be no, no cable television for the people in the town of Alton.
You trying to tell me?
Similar, let me finish. Similar to what you see on any of the Dish networks, when they go into contract with a, um, a network and the contract's not failing, that station is just black.
Unless, yeah, unless you have TDS.
No, no, I'm talking about a Dish. Any of the Dish companies.
That's happened.
Right. It ha, it's happened with Channel nine, WMUR.
That's one channel.
I, I know that.
So.
Yes.
You have these cable companies in the town of Alton or whatever town. They have massive audience here.
Yes, well.
And do you think they're gonna shut them down and the other company takes over?
No, well, one is, we shouldn't be talking about that as far as I'm concerned. We should be looking, moving forward with the new contract. Secondly is, I'd hate to see us not have one, and that would happen because then we, the four of us right here, I'd be tired of that. How bad the service is and how much it costs, we would be tired of that.
I actually think it's a pretty good service from what I've heard.
That's what I'm saying.
And everybody, no matter who they're with, whether it's Lenny Broadband, TDS, Dish, Direct.
You're gonna have problems.
There's problems.
And they, and it's like anything. They set their price to one.
This is close to one another, so there's really no benefit for one. But in, in the interest of the town, the franchise fees and what we get from them, we need to sit down and do this. And I don't know what the other group or Mr. Dunn with Guilford is looking to enhance with their contract. And maybe that's one thing they could enhance from their product.
Give us a little more.
Because we no longer have public access, so anybody on Lenny Broadband doesn't get to watch the meeting, which I think is fabulous. Because the people were, when we first was with Metrocast, and there was one before that, when that, that all went to the cable access, and we had Peter Bujon here, um, taking us, and Bob Longmog, God bless his soul, would sit here and tape us at our meetings, put it on the TV. Nobody came to our meetings anymore, but they sure had a lot to say at the coffee shop.
Yeah.
So they still have a lot to say at the coffee shop. So I, that's one of the best things. They took it on, so it makes people come out. But we need to move on with this, get a contract going. Uh, if you have no problems, and, and I would say give it another week to see if anybody comes in. We ask them for their concerns. Um, we haven't heard anything yet, correct?
Nothing. It went into the Bay Sider and the Laconia Daily Sun and our website and out on, you know, different departments to post on bulletin boards and this and that, and, you know, the usual.
We can only bring so much to the citizens if they don't reach back out and send something in writing. So we need to move forward with this. So by next week, gentlemen, I'd like to know which way we'd like to go on our own. We have no problem with the contract. We're still gonna have to have a lawyer present it to the company.
Specialized lawyer.
Specialized lawyer.
And the consequences of not doing anything and staying the way we are is?
We don't know. She's gonna have to find out. Paul, make it a hundred percent.
Which is why we gotta talk about it next week.
Just find out what the consequences.
I mean, what?
I need to miss, enhance your municipal association. They're an advocate for us.
I will call Fran Bradley at Atlantic Broadband and find out what happens if we don't negotiate a contract with them.
Why would you ask your enemy that?
Get an answer.
Yes, municipal association.
They're not our enemy, though. They're not our enemy.
But are they a foe? Oh, well, they can be. They can be.
Okay. Moving on, gentlemen, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay. Wow. This is great. Approval of minutes. February first, twenty twenty-one, non-public. Remember, gentlemen, we postponed those last week because there was, Mr. McDonald had an issue. Mr. McDonald is not here tonight. Again.
But you had a talk with him, right?
Yes.
And he, he understands now?
I, I, I will not answer for that point.
Okay.
So I'm asking to table the approval of minutes on February first, twenty twenty-one, non-public till Mr. McDonald is back.
I think that's fair.
The issue was with Mr. McDonald, not, not myself.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Like a motion to prove the consent agenda has submitted to us, gentlemen, fabulous.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
May my Mr. Holt approve the consent agenda from March first, twenty twenty-one, by the assessing department. Second by Mr. Rochelle. Discussion. Being none, I'll hold the board. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Yes, go to the affirmative. Discretionary action on request for appointments, being none. Gentlemen, we do have a non-public session. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion enter in non-public session at seven forty-five, seven forty-six.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Hold this, may, do I have a second?
Second.
May my Mr. Holt enter into non-public session underneath Iris Day ninety-one dash A colon three, paragraph two, B for hiring, C for reputation, E for legal. Second, Mr. Rochelle. Not being none, I'll hold the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Whitworth, yes. Both at seven forty-six, we are a non-public session. We will come out a non-public session, rejoin a public session. If you wanna stay tuned and wait first, Mr. Josh will let you know when we are back.
Good evening, folks. We are back in public session at 9:12. Gentlemen, I need a motion to not divulge the minutes of non-public session, means A, affect adversely the reputation of persons other than a member of this board, and B, render a proposed action ineffective. Mr. Whitman, do not to divulge the minutes of non-public session. I need A, affect adversely to reputation in person other than a member of this board, and B, render a proposed action ineffective. Second by Mr. Holt, discussion. Being none uphold the board, Mr. Holt?
Yes, Mr. Ashell.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes. Votes affirmative. Gentlemen, at this time, being no other further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:12.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Paul Ashell to adjourn at 9:12, second by Mr. Holt. I'll uphold the board, Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Ashell?
Yes.
Mr. Holt, yes. Folks, we are adjourned, and we will see you next week, same place, same time, 6 p.m.